For joining us today, Mr. Wolford is not able to be with us today. Guy, if you could state where you are and the reason that you're not able to join us so that we could bring you in remotely.
Guy Wolford, Percy, Pennsylvania, vacation.
Okay, do we have a motion to allow Mr. Wolford to participate remotely in the budget work session?
So move.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
A motion, a second, any discussion? All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, Guy, you're good. If you'll just mute yourself for right now, your mic is live, so if you ask questions on it, it will come through so you can be heard, okay?
Very good.
All right, so first of all, thank you all so much for joining us in person and online. We all have been working for many, many months on budget, some way more than others. We want to say thank you to Mr. Meadows, to Calista, to all the staff. Thank you to everyone who has worked so hard to get us where we are today. This is still just a part of a process, and so this work session is not the end-all, be-all, but it is certainly further in the answers that we need as we move along with the city's budget for 2025, 2026. Today Jenny was able to put together a new graphic that shows the next set of four or five meetings that we have scheduled. If there are any additional meetings scheduled, we will add those and go from there. But at this point in time, I'm going to turn the floor over to Craig Meadows.
Thank you, sir.
All yours.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Good to see everyone this evening in our continuing series of Monday night meetings. We only have a few more to go. We'll be getting into April soon and a couple there, and we'll talk about those at the end. I forgot to put that slide in, but I'll certainly remind everyone of that. This presentation is literally hot off the press. We spent the afternoon tying and cross-tying, and one of the things that I want to tell you right up front is what I'm presenting to you tonight is where we are at this point in time. We're going to continue to refine some things as we go through the week, succeeding weeks, but one of the key things that we need to get to tonight is we are to the point where we have to place the advertisement for the public hearing. And when we place the advertisement for the public hearing, we have to have the estimated revenues or the estimated budgets for each of the funds, and we also have to have the proposal specifically with regard to the real estate tax rate, which we'll talk about in just a few minutes, and also any changes to the utility rate. So we will, we will go through those as we go through the evening. Please stop at any point if you have questions. I do again want to thank everyone for your patience as I've worked with Calista and the staff to develop the budgets for the utility funds, which we reviewed with you last week, and the general fund, which we're going to be reviewing with you this evening. We'll talk about the pictures in a minute, but just enjoy the pictures while I talk. The utility fund budgets were somewhat challenging to review and develop, but the general fund took the challenge to another level. Gaining an understanding of the revenue estimates for the city took considerable time and considerable patience from Calista and staff, and required extensive review of not only the current year, but the prior years as well. And I want to talk about that a little bit more in a minute also, because that is one of the reasons we're going to have to talk about some tough choices. Now the pretty picture, the expenditure side of the general fund was also very challenging as the city has over 68 departments and/or divisions with employees and operating expenses in the general fund of over $30 million. I think the budget printout for the expenses for the general funds, about 110, 115 pages of numbers, got well-accreased with those numbers last week, and again over the weekend, and as recently as 10 minutes ago, when we were still trying to track something down. The department heads, constitutional officers, and agency heads all have worked diligently to review their operations and submit their budgets for the upcoming fiscal year, after which Calista and I reviewed and made adjustments to get the fund balanced for the presentation this evening. So it's been a lot of work put in, there's still work to do, we'll talk about that as well. So you're probably sitting there going, why is he showing us a bunch of pictures? I want to talk about numbers. Why am I showing you pictures this evening? Sometimes, and I found myself thinking about this several times over the weekend, especially yesterday when I came over here to pick up the latest round of printouts, sometimes we get all, we all get so lost in the numbers, we forget why we're really in here as elected to leaders and as staff, and that is, we're here to work together to provide the highest level of service to the citizens of Radford that we're able to do at a cost that is reasonable and fair. That's the reason I'm happy to be doing this as interim, that's the reason I think you guys ran for election. Radford is a wonderful city and has always provided an exemplary, exemplary level of service. Unfortunately, it's simply no longer possible to provide the level of service that our citizens have come accustomed to without some significant adjustments to the city budget, specifically the general fund. We'll talk about that in the upcoming slides, and also what steps that I'm proposing to you this evening to keep Radford at the forefront of Virginia's small independent cities. First, I wanted to talk just a few minutes about the rate changes that we talked about last week. The solid waste fee, we proposed increasing the residential solid waste fee from $22 to $25. Two questions that came up after that presentation was if you wanted to go more than $25, every dollar on the solid waste fee generates approximately $40,000, so the $3 increase is generating about $120,000, but if the council decided they wanted to go higher than 25, every dollar's another $40,000. Another question that I got asked was, there was some discussion about a charge for leaf collection. That's, you know, leaf collections currently included within the budget. The question was if there was a $25 annual leaf collection fee levied on, on a bill once a year for leaf collection. Based on the residential accounts, that would generate likely about another $80,000, plus or minus. So those are, those are, those are things to consider. Sorry. Solid waste fees, what I'm proposing at $25, currently you're at $22. $25 basically puts you squarely in the middle of where neighboring communities are right now. Dublin would be lower, Christiansburg is lower, Pulaski County and Blacksburg are higher. So that's solid waste. Water and sewer, we talked about increasing both the water and wastewater rates by $4 per 4,000 gallons, so it would be going from $20.32 on water to $24.32. Be going from $32.48 on wastewater to $36.48, an increase of a total of $8 per month for 4,000 gallons of water and sewer, which, and I apologize, I did not bring that in here again this evening, but the vast, vast majority of the utility, water and sewer utility customers use 4,000 or less, so that's your average. There was a question asked, okay, if you went from, for every dollar above that, in other words, instead of $24.32 for water, if you did $25.32. Every dollar increase in the water rates generate, generates approximately $80,000. Every dollar increase in the wastewater rate generates approximately $84,000. So those, those are the revenues associated with that. Also included this slide again, just to show you with the proposed Radford rates at $24.32 and $36.48, that would be the fiscal year '26 proposed rates. The rates for the other communities listed beneath Radford, those are the current year rates. So even increasing the water and sewer rates to what I've proposed as part of the budget, you're still lower than those five communities listed below that, and that's lower than their current year rates, which in some likelihood, those will probably be adjusted as well for fiscal '26. Let's talk a little bit now about the general fund and where we are, and some of the concerns that I've seen over the last week or so, actually beyond the last week or so, but really started honing in as we started doing detailed review over the last two weeks. This is what I shared with you a couple of weeks ago. General fund as of the end of February, net revenues under expenditures of about a million six. If you take the RAN out on top of that as well, the net revenues under expenditures are about 5.6 million dollar short. The good news on that slide is that the city does receive significant revenues from state and local, state and federal, excuse me, partners in March and again in June for quarterly payments. So we are very optimistic and positive that with those quarterly revenues coming in and reductions that you've already agreed upon, and some additional reductions that we're going to continue to seek out, that gap will close considerably by the end of the fiscal year. It's not, it's not going to go away, but it should close considerably. That gap's not going to widen.
Are you talking about the 1.6 million dollar gap?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, the, the.
And so it's, it's the end of March, so when are those funds going to come in for March if they come in?
They, they've been coming in, this is as of February, as the funds come in, the treasurer receives those, then they have to be posted to Munis for us to be able to, I won't be able to tell you March until probably.
Mid-April?
Mid-look. Okay.
So we've received them, they just haven't been posted to the general ledger yet, or we're still receiving them?
Probably.
Okay.
That's a, that's a tough one to answer, because that one occurs over on the treasurer side of the house, so.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering, okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
But we, but we should have some, and as soon as we got them, we'll share them.
Gotcha.
This is a slide that I wanted to spend a few minutes on, because it really kind of signifies one of the major issues that, why the city has not been able to make significant gains in its reserves in recent years, and it has to do with the estimation of some of the major revenue line items. And this is, this is a select pick, you know, some other revenues do better than budget, some other revenues don't do as well. These were four, excuse me, five areas that really have stood out as I've reviewed the budget the last couple of weeks. The real estate tax estimates, the sales and use tax estimates, charges for rescue services, state reimbursements for health and welfare, and federal reimbursements for health and welfare. And, you know, I've tried to get these classified as best I could based on the accounting and also tying back to the audit reports. The, the challenge, as you'll see, and I'll, I'll start with the real estate taxes, is for this current year budget, we estimated 8.9, almost $9 million in real estate taxes. Based on the collections to date and what we anticipate for the remainder of this year, that collection rate is really going to be closer to 7.6 million. Similar issue last year, the budget was estimated at 8.8 million, collections were 7.9 million. There is a question there, and we continue to check that, because it's like, well, you had a reassessment and you increased the tax rate, but the actual revenues for this year appear right now to be trending less than the revenues last year. So there's a concern there that we're going to continue to chase down. Fiscal year 2023, again, estimate was 8.8 million, actual was 7.5 million. So you can see just in that line, there's a million, million-plus difference, and I'm not going to spend tons of time going through every line, but what I tried to do at the bottom is, in those five categories for this fiscal year, it looks like the revenues are going to be almost 3.9 million dollars short of what was projected in the budget. Last year, they were 3.3 million dollars short for what was projected in the budget. The previous year, almost 2.4 million. You know, Calista and I have had some conversations, and we, I certainly understand, because have done that myself over the years, you always look at your actuals and try to project based on some historical averages, plus whatever you're anticipating with any rate increases, you try to project accurate estimates for the current year. I, I can't answer why some of these are as off as they are, but just those two numbers at the bottom, when one set of numbers is almost 3.9 million dollars off, in the previous year it was 3.3 million dollars off, what that means is your expenses have to be that much less or more to be able to gain, and it's just not, it's just not, so.
Let me ask you a quick question. With the real estate taxes, with there being a differential of a million dollars, I mean, that's, that's more than, you know, moving a couple pennies here and there, that's a lot of money. So what do you think that discrepancy is? Is it outstanding taxes, delinquent issues? Is it that somewhere down the road that the calculation on what the expectation should be was elevated?
I've tried to track back through the calculations. If you take the real estate assessed values times your new rate, it's, it's not 8.9 million. When I did that, I also thought, well, maybe there's an, maybe there's been some allocation in the past for collection of delinquent taxes that would bring that number up. I don't see evidence of that, and again, the challenge is that it's been a consistent, it's, it's been off consistently. You know, the treasurer reports that her collections are 95%, so, you know, I've not seen any reports to, to verify that, but I'm assuming if what's been billed has been collected at that level, and you do the calculation, and the revenues based on the calculation are trending fairly close to what the estimate is, then I, it's, it's, it's just an error in the estimation, in my opinion.
But we can get what was billed, especially the last three years, we can get what was billed, and then the last two budget years before this one, we can get what those actuals were compared to what was billed.
Should be able to say, yes, sir.
So we should be able to do that, to say, you know, if it was actually billed and it was 98% collection, and, and what was billed was $8 million, for example, instead of 7.8, that should tell us, you know.
That there's an issue there, too, yes. The, the one line that, as we, well, all of these are of concern, but one line that stood out to me, and I want us to, over the next couple of weeks, this goes beyond budget actually, is getting a better understanding of the charges for rescue services. You know, the rescue services two years ago were 457, last year they were 549, this year we're estimating at 475, but the estimates for the revenues for each of those years, this year it's off almost $300,000, last year it was off 240,000, the year before that it was off a bunch, it was off almost 400,000. So something, either the assumptions are, are not based on, the assumptions don't appear to be based on what the revenues that are being collected are based on, so we've got to close that gap, too. And I say all that to say that as, as we put this year's budget together, Calista and I really spent a lot of time trying to hone in on the revenue side and make sure that what we're estimating for this coming year is achievable. Because if, if you're a community that has large reserves and you miss it a year or two with your revenue estimations, you can afford to let your reserves carry you for that? We're not there anymore, and we can't afford those kind of misses. Looking at the general fund, the fiscal year 2025 budget is 36,22,877. That's based off of Munis' report for expenditures. I know there was a question that came up, a meeting or so ago, that, well, on one of the slides I showed the budget for several of the funds, and on the other slide I showed the expenses, and the budgets didn't match, and the question was, does the budget have to match? Well, yes, absolutely. What happens is sometimes when the board, the council approves appropriation ordinances, they don't get posted right away, and that causes a tweak, and that's why one doesn't equal one, one, and so the 36022, I think is, is, it's, it is, or it's very close to what the budget for fiscal '25 is. The proposal for fiscal year 2026 is 33,122,947, which is a decrease of almost 2.9 million dollars, which is about 8.1% lower than the current year budget. There's some reasons for it being lower. A lot of it has, there, there are some revenue increases, but there's also some significant revenue expense decreases that, tonight, as we talk about some things, I don't, we, we have a lot of generalities, that's what we were working on right up to the last minute today. This budget assumes an increase in the real estate tax rate from 69 cents to 79 cents per $100 valuation. That should generate about a million two, a million, right around a million two in additional revenues. The budget, as we are looking at it right now, assumes reductions in funding to outside agencies and to the schools. There's got to be some decreases there in order to, as I've used the word several times, in order to right-size the expense side to get it lined up with the revenues. It includes the elimination of all capital purchases across the general fund, except where required. What I have shared with several folks is if we have to go out for a capital purchase, if it can be bonded or packaged, you know, for equipment, if we can put a package together to, to get a lease purchase or a debt service, we can use the lease purchase to fund that, and we'll amend the budget at that point. The big, the big point on this slide is, we have a meeting on Wednesday with the department directors, I'm also reaching out to constitutional officers and the city's agency heads. Once we get all the numbers tweaked and get the reports run, we'll be sending those reports out to all the directors, the constitutional officers and agency heads, to ask them to please make another pass and see what else there may be in there that can be adjusted. The other thing that we're going to do tomorrow is there'll be a 90-day freeze on filling vacant city positions. I'm not prepared at this point to recommend eliminating those positions, simply because several of those positions are key positions in the organization, but until we get an understanding of where we are with getting the RAN addressed between now and June 30th, we, we just need to take a hold on filling positions. We'll revisit that as we get further into, before the end of the fiscal year. When we talk about the real estate tax rate, the proposed rate is, would be 79 cents. Pulaski County currently is at 74 cents, Montgomery County is currently at 75 cents, Christiansburg, which of course is the town tax plus the county tax, is 89 cents, Dublin, again, town plus county is 98, Blacksburg, town-county a dollar one, Pulaski-town-county a dollar 10. So even at 79 cents, which is a significant increase for Radford, you're, you'll be slightly higher than the two counties, but you're lower than all the surrounding towns.
Yes, sir.
And that's last year's numbers for them though, too.
Again, that is, thank you, that's correct. The, the, the numbers below Radford's are current fiscal years.
Craig, I wanted to kind of tie into an email that me and you talked about today, too, to put in perspective what a cent means for us compared to other localities, too. For example, one cent in Radford generates approximately $121,000 per cent. So, you know, 10-cent increase is about 1.2 million dollars. Well, for Montgomery County, one penny on their real estate tax generates 1.23 million dollars. Pulaski County, one cent on their real estate brings in $304,000 a year.
Almost triple.
So if we were to do 30 cent tonight, it would generate 3.6 million dollars is it. Just, I was kind of interested about that, so when we look at those, what they can generate off that and what we can generate off that are different things, too, so.
Absolutely.
And thank you, yeah, and thank you for getting me those numbers, because I think that that's interesting.
Well, and that, it's very important. You know, Montgomery County was very blessed that a penny brought in a substantial amount of money. When I was the city manager in Bedford, if I remember correctly, back in the day, a penny generated about $38,000, and my comment to the elected officials there is, when you had a significant issue, you can't penny your way out of it. I mean, you'd, you'd be raising the tax rate sky-high to try to address it, you have to have other forms of revenue. And I know, you know, I know folks have concerns about real estate taxes. I did not include the slide this evening about the other independent cities that have electric systems, just as a comparison, but nearly all of the other independent cities that have electric systems are, are over a dollar. And that's, I'm not saying that's where you need to be, but I am saying that we've got to continue to right-size this budget to be able to cover what you're trying to cover. For all funds, the, the total is 77,362,257. General, general funds, 33.1 million, electric, my eyes are not as good as they used to be, 28.8. Water and wastewater, about 6.7, transit, 3.8, streets, 3 million, solid waste, a million, 734. Internal service, which I've shown there, but it's in the other budget, so you don't add it in there twice. The total is seventy-seven, three sixty-two, two fifty-seven. So, and I did not, unfortunately, due to the time, the time got short as we were pulling all this together this afternoon. I do not know, what's that, do you know our current year budget, seventy? I can't remember, I'll have that for you.
And of course, that's complicated, too, because the electric purchase really isn't something we can adjust up or down. It's one that we get as we get it, when we get billed for the electricity that's been used. So that has to be added in, that complicates that number.
Yes, it does, yes, it does. This is where we are with the budget this evening. The, as I shared with a couple of you in the last couple of days, tonight was to get us to this point, and that is give you totals, give you the recommended real estate tax rate, give you the recommended changes to utility fees, open the floor for discussion amongst you as to yes, no, high, low. Because the key, when we're done this evening, is, and Jenny, I believe the council needs to make a motion to advertise the budget and rates that they decide to advertise, isn't that correct? Okay.
So a couple of quick questions. First, I want to make a statement. Thank you for the hard work on this. Thank you all for all that you've done. Thank you to all the department heads and everybody who's been a part of this. None of this is simple, it's complicated. And one of the big things was trying to unwind where our projections had been and where we might not have been able to be accurate in those projections in the past. For the projections that you were showing, where it was select revenues, and I know we're not getting down to that level of detail, one of the concerns is if we've been off in the past, how have we corrected for this year so we can be sure that we're going to be more reliable with what we've projected?
We'll have more next Monday night. I hope to have a slide that has the major categories of the revenues more than, I wanted to show just those select ones this evening, just because that's the bulk of where the challenge has been. But you'll have comparisons for all those major revenue categories to look at next Monday night.
But in getting to your thirty-three million, you feel more confident in the numbers that you've been able to put together to say, we think we're going to bring in X amount on real estate tax. We think we're going to bring in this amount on these services.
Yes, sir, I do.
Okay.
Craig, as you go through this and what you've presented, for the cuts and the corrections that you've identified so far, is that just to get us on a more reliable budget? That doesn't take into consideration what we're behind?
It does, it does not. But it does not, it does not generate excess revenues to be able to catch up. It generates revenues to balance to the proposed expenses for the next year. Now, traditionally, and we tried hard, traditionally, when you budget revenues, you should be budgeting conservatively, so hopefully you get more in revenue than you've budgeted. Conversely, on your expense side, you should be budgeting slightly higher so that when, but, so at the end of the year, you have some growth from more revenues than you expected, expenses less. It has just been so incredibly challenging with the last couple of years' budgets to make any headway at all and with Radford's budget.
And my concern, too, is, you know, with a lot of these accounts, it's not that we just can be flush. A lot of them have capital outlays. There's things, there's things that need to be purchased ongoing to continue to maintain those departments. So, I mean, really, it's not good enough to just break even, either.
That's correct.
Yeah, I mean, overall, I guess this is where I'm at with everything, is I think that this helps get us to a presentable budget moving forward, but it doesn't address the elephant in the room of where we are. And where we are is, if you take into account that we're, we average three AEP payments behind at one point five each, that's four point five million dollars. Three school payments of, I think it's four eighty-five, which would bring us about one point four five million dollars. A one million dollar RAN, or I'm sorry, a four million dollar RAN. And then, you know, in the bank, it seems like we average one point five to two point five million dollars in cash fairly regularly. I mean, that puts us anywhere between six and nine million dollars upside down to catch up. And so while I think that these take steps, with knowing what this is, I mean, I think we have to do more. We're gonna, we're gonna have to go back and look at more cuts. We're gonna have to, we just have to. I mean, Radford's gonna have to stomach if we want to do what it's gonna take to remain a city. I mean, that's what it's gonna be.
I agree, but I also don't think that we can come in last on all of these and expect to maintain our city status. It's gonna cost us to remain a city, there's no way around that. So, you know, even the numbers that you've given us, we're still almost in every single category, the very last space, and as far as what we're bringing in revenue-wise in the New River Valley, and that's based on last year's numbers, not even what's projected. And I understand that we can't run the city based on what other communities are doing, but it does show what it takes to function successfully. So almost on all of the areas that you've suggested increases, I would actually increase a little bit further, which absolutely I hate because I don't like taxes either. But I think that, you know, where you're at gets us started, but I think that we have to be aggressive because really, you know, we've all had a reprieve somewhat for the last four years. And we've not, we're not going to go back and be able to make up for those revenues not brought in, but we did have a reprieve, but now we have to start putting one foot in front of the other to get in the right direction, because we're just not. So I would still be a little bit more aggressive, and I'm more than willing to talk about that, or how do we want to proceed?
I think you get back to, and what I kind of asked you to make sure that we understand. So what we've allocated for on the increases in these costs now are just, they don't dig into what we're behind. They are getting us to a place that we feel is a realistic budget.
These, the solid waste fees, as proposed, the water and sewer rates, as proposed, generate reserves. The solid waste fees generate, if I remember correctly, about forty thousand dollars. It's not a lot, but it, with the increase, it generates about forty thousand in reserves. There are some additional expenses that we're gonna, we're gonna keep looking at every fund to try to continue to find ways to reduce those expenses. Water and sewer, it actually increased about seven hundred thousand, I think. And candidly, part of getting the general fund balanced is we're using some of that increase in the water and sewer fund to move to the general fund to offset. I don't like doing that, but the flip side is, as Councilmember Foster mentioned, you have to, you have to raise additional rates if you want to make that up another way. That's why I did want to point out, you know, that's what additional dollars generate in solid waste. That's what they generate in water and sewer. We did not make any increases on the electric fund simply because there's still several big moving targets that we want to get a handle on. And candidly, not that you want to do it this way, but if some things get resolved in the general fund and the electric fund in the next thirty to sixty days, you can advertise within thirty days and make adjustments at that point if you need to on the electric fund. Ten cents on the real estate tax was just, again, trying to look at where you were and where you are, where you would be, trying to hit that sort of in the middle. But I also understand the concern that maybe that, I mean, I've always said over the years, when I present a budget to the elected body, it's, at that point, it's yours to push up or push down. The key tonight, though, I will just emphasize again, is on any of these rates, if you're thinking that you want to go higher than what I've discussed, you need to talk about that and include it in the advertisement, especially the real, well, it's primarily the real estate tax. The real estate tax, when you advertise that rate, you cannot go higher than what you advertise. You can go lower if the council so desires.
Fees, we can come back to should we need to later in the year. There's just a period of time we have to advertise. The real estate tax has to be determined as an upper-end threshold tonight. We can always go lower than that rate, but we cannot go higher than that and advertise that. And then we'll have our public hearing in a couple of weeks to then talk about it and go from there. Do you have anything you want to add?
You do need to advertise those utility rate fees, too. So those are, that's just a new requirement in the last two years, so.
But it's still something that, let's say, two months down the road, if we decided that had to be higher for some reason, we can always revisit that. The real estate's a little more complicated because we have two shots in a year where the tax tickets have to go out. And I think we can only adjust for the whole year, we can't on real estate tax.
Can't adjust mid-year.
We can't adjust it multiple times. So it is the main thing we need to discuss tonight of what the upper threshold would be. It doesn't mean that we're going to raise it to that level, but we have to know where everybody's threshold is to be able to say it's X amount, and that's what will be advertised and discussed. And then we will decide from there to, from zero to that point, what that looks like. Am I summing that up pretty well?
Sir.
Okay.
I apologize, I forgot that I had this last slide in there. I wanted to put this slide up because these are some other tax rates that I did not make recommendations for change. Hotel occupancy tax in Radford is currently eight percent. That's the second highest in the area, only behind Christiansburg at nine percent. Blacksburg, seven. Pulaski County, six. Pulaski County, five. Montgomery County's three. Prepared meals tax is at five and a half percent. That's pretty much in the middle. Christiansburg, seven and a half. Pulaski, seven. Dublin, seven. Blacksburg, six. And Montgomery County and Pulaski County are at four. Cigarette taxes, nearly everybody in the region's at forty cents a pack. The only one that I found different was Dublin's at twenty-five. Then personal property tax, again, it's right smack in the middle. Montgomery's two fifty-five, Radford's two forty-four, Pulaski County's two thirty-five. So again, it did.
In comparison to their last year's rates.
In comparison, yes, ma'am.
We have worked on hotel and cigarette tax in the last six or seven years. Both of those were increased at least once. I don't know that we did anything twice on that. I know hotel, I'm not a hundred percent sure on, because I think there was an occupancy tax increase potentially the year before we got elected. So that's something that's been adjusted as well.
Occupancy tax is doing well. That's an area that is generating good revenue. We'll have more detail, and we'll talk about those next week, but that one's doing well. Prepared meals tax has not quite made it to what you expected, but Radford's lost some significant restaurants. You lost Applebee's, you've lost Moe's. There was another one somebody mentioned to me. There's a couple that have dropped out that have caused that to drop, and.
I will say, if we're still interested in looking at some increases, the prepared meals tax, I think that there could be some room, because, look, people can't choose whether they cool or heat their homes. I mean, that's a necessity, but, and I don't, the last thing I'd want to do, is I'm a small business owner myself, is impact the restaurants. But, you know, in a time of need, you don't have to eat out. People have to heat their homes and cool their homes. So about how much does that generate for us on a yearly basis?
I'll have to get back to you. It's not, it's not a significant amount, even going up two percent or three percent.
And hotel is similar, because that's not really, the burden is not on our citizens so much as people who might be visiting. So, I know I've been asking about these, so I did write down some thoughts. So just to give us a place to get started, I'm going to throw out the numbers that I've been looking at. So for meals tax, I had six point five percent, which puts us in the middle with last year's rates overall. Cigarette tax, we're pretty much in the top. I still wouldn't be sad if we went to forty-one cents, which is a one cent difference. Personal property tax, I would probably go to two fifty-five, and that would put us the same as Montgomery County last year. And then for the hotel occupancy, I had eight point five percent, which is also the same as Christiansburg was last year. So that's where I would move them.
Eight point five on the hotel occupancy.
Jenny, would these rates all have to be advertised for the same public hearing?
I would recommend that, even if it's not required, just to have it all listed in the ad.
But this is different, these rates are different from the real estate tax because we don't have to have it by a certain period in time. So if we need more information to understand that, we can do that.
And I apologize.
That's okay.
I had this slide prepared, I had the history, but the one piece I did not get to today was how much does it generate? But we'll find that out.
Out of, just out of curiosity to counsel, like, what more on this line item? What more information do we feel like we need before we can do something?
Well, one of the pieces I wonder with our prepares meal, prepared meals tax is how the collections are going in that versus the projections. I think that's the big issue, not just the restaurants that have left, but are we actually collecting that amount? Will that create more of a challenge as we go? Because that's a complicated tax. If I'm not mistaken, a percentage of that actually stays with the restaurant. And so we have to look at that and see what that looks like. So there's just more information. I want to make sure we're intentional about what we go into. We can certainly set a rate. I don't know that we know what that means. That's the thing. And I think we need to know what it means when we do it, because it will have potential impact for some of the businesses. So I think that's the piece, just so that we can go into it intentionally. I'm not saying I'm for or against it. I'm just saying that's a more complicated rate than some of the others, to be honest, because there is a fee given to the restaurants for collecting it for us, and I don't know if it's a flat one percent or if it's a percentage of a percentage.
And, you know, for me, I feel comfortable because we're, we'd be, meals-wise, smack dab in the middle of last year's rates. So, I mean, I think that says a lot, too. And with our issue being that we're just not drawing in the revenue, I'm also thinking, as Seth is, there are some of these that we can move, where we're not impacting necessarily just our residents, that, you know, there's some visitors and, you know, that would be impacted a little bit greater than our citizens.
I do think that that's a good point. When we talk about sharing the burden, you know, this, these taxes are more for your out-of-town folks that come in, you know, and we eat here, too. I mean, I get that, too, but rather than, you know, tack it on to the real estate, too. But I'm just curious of what it would generate when I think about other things. I mean, I think we've seen, just from the numbers that we've talked about, it's not going to be enough, unfortunately, but.
Let's talk the personal property tax for just a minute. One of the reasons we hadn't touched that in recent years, because we had looked at it, was because of the reassessments of vehicles. And with the changing price, the taxes were significantly higher in the actual assessment on the vehicle rather than the rate. And so that was one of the pieces we were looking at. We don't have the same requirement there to reset that the way we do the real estate tax, but that's one that, while our rate hasn't changed, the value of that to the citizens has. And that was something we talked about a couple of years ago.
And, you know, anything we touch is going to impact the citizens. There's no way around that. Everything that we do is going to impact the citizens. So, I mean, we could actually say that about every single thing that we're going to have to deal with, and we're going to be paralyzed, and we're going to end up in a worse situation than we are. So I personally want to move on the things that we can move on because I feel like we're regurgitating a lot of this. And I know I'm frustrated. I think the community is frustrated, wanting to know where that is, where we're going to land, so they can make decisions as well. So, you know, just to counsel, there's things that I am more than prepared to move on, knowing that every single thing that we do, as you've said, is going to touch people. And, you know, when you talk about personal property tax, this is impacting not just our community, this is impacting everyone. And so there's no way around that. That is the current norm, as unfortunate as it is. To do nothing is to do something, and we see where that gets us, so.
Well, I'll just poll everybody. Is what Jesse's proposing, what you would want to advertise for these rates?
I am good with, the only one that I am a little hesitant on is the personal property tax. I think I'm okay with the other three, but I wouldn't, for further discussion, but if we propose it, I mean, obviously, we're not setting it tonight, so I feel comfortable proposing it for further discussion.
Kelly, what are your thoughts?
No, I think that's fine. And to echo Seth's point, I think that the personal property tax is something that I'm a little bit more hesitant about. I just want a little bit more information. The others I'm fine with, and I feel okay with the level that you suggested, knowing that we can always lower it, but we can't make it any higher once we post it, so.
So just for reiteration, eight point five for hotel occupancy, six point five for prepared meals. You do want to go to forty-one cents.
do want to go to 41 cents instead of 40 on cigarette tax, and 252 or 54?
255.
55?
I say let's do 255, and that's the top end, and then that gives us maneuverability. We can always go down.
I'm happy with going higher than that. I mean, keeping it there and being able to go lower.
You got all that, Jenny, for the advertisements, for those?
I do.
Okay.
Craig, and so we've talked a lot about the increases too. I think we're going to still have to look at further reductions. I mean, when I do the math on this, I really, I really do. And no one in this room wants to hear that, and I don't want to say that, but when you...
Not an option.
Yeah. I mean, I just think that we're going to have to look at further things. I mean, when we're at the place that we're sitting at right now, it, you know, this gets us to a more comfortable budget moving forward, but we have a lot of damage that we have to correct. So I'd like to take a look at that between now and our next meeting as well.
Before we get to that, we still have a little more business to do. I know we're going to talk about that more. Guy, are you good with everything we've talked about from the tax rates?
Yes.
Okay. So real estate tax rate, a 10-cent tax rate has been, a 10-cent increase in the tax rate has been proposed from 69 to 79 cents. Is that the threshold we want, or do we want to advertise that higher?
I had 82 cents.
Is that the threshold everybody would be comfortable with?
The proposed was 79, is that correct?
79, yeah.
That's going to generate another $360,000.
Again, I'm okay proposing it with, for further discussion because we know that we can't, we can't go higher once it's...
Is that the highest you want to consider, or do you want to consider it higher?
I feel like we need to hold it that personally. I think that's, that was higher.
Guy, I know, hey, you're, we're hearing a little bit over the phone there. Guy, we're talking about what our upper threshold on real estate tax for advertisement. Not that we're setting it at this rate, but we cannot go higher than that. We can only go lower once we make our final decision. The proposal from the city manager was 79 cents from 69. The proposal by Mrs. Foster was 82 cents instead of 79. What is your threshold? Are you comfortable with that?
The 82 is comfortable to advertise, but I would not be voting for something that high.
Okay. So you are saying you're comfortable with advertising the 82 cent rate?
Correct.
Okay. Kelly, what are your thoughts?
Did that only be generating another 3...
$360,000.
I thought every dollar was 120.
Every cent.
Every cent is...
Whatever cent, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Every cent.
Every, right. Well, it's 3 cents higher than the 1.2 million. So it's 1.2 million as was proposed for the balanced budget. The additional 3 cents would be $360,000.
Okay, I'm just making sure I understand. Yeah, I think I'm okay with that, knowing that we can, you know, go lower if we need to.
And I think on that, we're going to have to also face the hard fact that, as you mentioned, cities who provide their own electricity, which electricity went up 26% in two years for us. So that's very, very substantial. And so knowing that other localities that provide their electricity are over a dollar, and I feel like, you know, we're, even at 82, we're functioning.
We are. The one thing that really, I know we have to do what we have to do, but we do have the lowest LCI scores in the state, and we do have a lot of poverty in Radford. So it really, really concerns me about families being able to take on some of these. But as a city, we just have a lot of decisions to make. But these, this impacts people. I mean, this, this...
Oh, I agree completely. I think that's the hardest part with any of these. You know, we're asking people for dollars that they could be spending otherwise, that they need to spend otherwise sometimes. And that's a big challenge. So I don't think anybody takes that lightly. Just to confirm, it sounds like everybody's in agreement. We'll advertise 82 cents as the maximum rate that we'll consider, and then we'll make that determination after the public hearing in two weeks as to what that level should be. Are you all okay with that, that plan?
Yes.
Now, let's talk about what you were bringing up on the expense side. Again, Mr. Meadows stated that the department heads and agency heads and everybody are going to get together to talk about, you know, we've reduced already 8.1%. That's a little less than $3 million from the current general fund budget to where we are today. I think they're all going to look to see what can be found. The other piece that we have to consider is for next week, when we're having this discussion, what would you be comfortable, and comfortable's not necessarily a good word, but what would you be willing to support in reducing if we go down that path? Because we're going to have to direct Mr. Meadows and the department heads with those areas. Now, I'm not asking you for that tonight because I think you've got to take time to think about it and consider those things. We need to see what is brought back to us. We've had really good work so far from all of the folks who've worked on this to try to get us to as many savings as we can find. I think the other thing we can talk about next Monday, and I believe we're going to ask our Commissioner of Revenue and our Treasurer to join us as well, is are there areas where we're not getting what we think we could get? Now, that's different from the projection that may be unrealistically high, which appears to have been the case, that budgets might have been based on previously. That estimate was probably not likely to happen. We've already heard this evening that we've pulled those numbers down pretty significantly. So there's still a possibility for an upside surprise, which would be great. Knock on wood. But realistically, those will be numbers we have to look at. We can also look at collections. What are we doing from that perspective? Where are we? I don't know where our delinquencies are, and I don't know that anybody does to be able to say we have X amount outstanding that we might be able to see some relief from. I think that, you know, to your point, that could potentially even cut into some of the area that we're behind on with some of those pieces. I think bringing in the Commissioner of Revenue to say, are there other revenue pieces we have not considered that we need to consider is helpful. And then ultimately, to look at any other options that we have to be able to move us where we need to be. It sounds like we've accomplished a couple of things which were very important tonight. First of all, this is a balanced budget. We are not out of balance. We don't have the structural imbalance. So that's a positive. It doesn't erase all the challenges, but it is a positive. The second piece is, we've taken a look at the revenues. The city staff have taken a look at the revenues and tried to recalibrate to an area where, when we say it's going to be so many million dollars, it is more likely than not going to come in closer to that, rather than it's a significantly higher amount that we may not be able to realize. That's helpful too. That is a pretty heavy lift, just to get us to there, and thank you all for making that happen. I think we...
I wanted to ask, too, Seth and I did the tour of the properties that the city owns. And I know we had asked about a couple of those properties and the possibility to maybe see what the market value would be on those and to release those to sell. I mean, I don't see any reason we shouldn't do that. Is, what, how do we go about that?
Well, and I'm contemplating some revenue from the sale of those properties in fiscal '26. I built in...
Okay, good.
Two or 250,000, I believe, because, and that may be, I just tried to take a placeholder. And I know that you guys did that tour. We need to follow up on that and get a report back to you on what next steps would be for that. But absolutely.
It was a little disappointing because on paper, it looked like we were holding a lot of property. Well, a lot of that property is...
Conservation district.
Yeah, and also the topography is a bit challenging. Big gullies and water. And so there were really only a couple that I felt like had real potential. But I would be curious about that.
Agreed. Craig, one thing, too, that I think we all want is to grow the pot, right? So that we're not cutting and we're not taxing. How can we grow what we have and bring in new money? And that's where I think, you know, we need to get through this budget season. But even having, and I know that we have some groups, but having, there's a lot of people in this community that have some really good ideas, that are passionate, that of having a work group of what are some ways that we can advertise and market Radford and get a think tank together. There's a lot of smart people in here that have invested a lot of time, that would be, that would love to do something like that. So I'd like to really visit that.
I think you read my mind because actually I had talked to a couple of people this week about the possibility of being in a working group to help us establish ideas and concepts that could help, mostly from a revenue generation side, but certainly things that we might be doing more efficiently. We've already talked about, are there things that we could outsource? But, you know, maybe there's another piece, you know, former leaders of the community, people who have served in those roles well, business leaders, other people like that. I agree completely. That was on my mind as well, to try to do that.
Well, and not to sound like a broken record, I still think that what we want to provide for our community is we still want some level of activity. It may not be at the same level, but as an example, I saw Jared Stoudt over the weekend. A lot of you know he's, he's local and he is so talented. And I told him, I said, you know what? Maybe you'd like to come to Radford and do a show for us. And he was so excited. So we have a lot of local talent that we might be able to look at. We have a tourism board. I know that I'm a broken record, but I do know that I have a lot of people in the community that come up and they would love to help foster these types of programs and they would volunteer. So I think we need to provide that format to make that happen. And I would like to see some things for the community still, that they may not be revenue generating, but they don't have to cost us either. So I would like to see, maybe, I know we usually did, would do five, even three concerts this summer with a volunteer group, get the tourism board together and see what we might be able to do. Because, yes, there's things we can't do, but there's so much we can do.
Well, the reason, you know, I know you probably think on my presentation, why am I starting with pictures? I just, I have been, in the time I've been here, before I started in Radford, but especially since I've started as your interim manager, there is so much to be proud of in this community. And there are lots of communities around here and around the state that are very envious of the things that Radford has. You don't want to lose those things. And the only way to not lose those things is, yeah, it's, there's going to have to be some pretty serious belt tightening. Some of these things that have been candidly somewhat of a bargain over the last few years, that they're going to have to, there's going to have to be additional revenue to keep those things. And the word I've used a couple of times is right size. I mean, you've got to take a serious look, which I hope we've done, will continue to do, at what you're capable of generating from a revenue side, and then match your expenses to what's coming in. And you can't, you just cannot continue to operate on the hope that, well, maybe we'll get that $4 million number when Colister ran the, there's, that $4 million has just constantly been a thorn. And that's got to be fixed. It has to be fixed.
Guy, do you have any other thoughts? Since you're on the phone, I know it's a little harder to hear. What are your thoughts this evening?
Well, I guess I'm trying to sit here and figure with the increases that we have proposed, the 10 cents, the $4, the $4. And with, I'm not sure what the cuts we've heard that are biting into the 9 million we're behind on. So does Craig have a figure with all we've talked about here, how much we've eaten into that 9, 10 million deficit we have?
The short answer to that, Guy, is we, the budget is balanced with the revenues and expenses, and on a couple of the utilities with some reserves, but it doesn't, it doesn't cut into that 9 or 10 million. Now, hopefully, if the revenues are estimated properly and the expenses are estimated properly for next year, you'll come out gaining some net revenues for your reserves. But it is not a fix for the current 9 million or 6 million or whatever. No, it's not.
And those things are generating interest and fees and late fees and, you know, yeah, additional costs.
So what are we doing to cut into the deficit?
We have reduced expenses already, almost a million dollars, the 941,000 that we talked about previously. We're going to again have a meeting on, when we meet with the department directors on Wednesday. We're not only looking at fiscal year '26, but we're going to have another conversation about, is there anything else that we can do for fiscal '25? The one thing I mentioned earlier this evening is, we have a number of vacant positions. We're not going to hire those positions in the next 90 days. We'll see how we wind up at the end of 90 days as to whether that has to continue. But, yeah.
Well, even, even if the department heads and everybody come up with a $3 million savings, that's still 6 million behind.
It's...
So are we going to continue to be getting behind and paying the electric to APO and to the school system?
No, sir. We continue to, as I've mentioned all along, this, this issue with the shortfall right now has been an issue of cash flow. We continue to get cash in to keep bills current, and we are staying consistently, I guess is the best way to put it, several payments behind with AEP and with the schools. We're working, hopefully, the slide I shared earlier, with March revenues and hopefully June revenues to be able to close that gap. I will tell you that I don't see any way at the current time that you're not going to have to have a revenue anticipation note again in fiscal 2026 to carry that over and continue to work on those reductions. But I understand what you're saying. I under, you know, the challenge is, if you tried to get the budget right sized between now and June 30th to make up for all of that, you would be eliminating entire city departments.
And I think the challenge that we run into too is, there are tipping points with everything that you do, that certainly there's a risk to not address those issues through cuts and other things, but there's also a risk that as we make some cuts, that we actually have to rehire in some areas and we have to look to offer different things in some areas, and that can actually be more expensive. So, you know, it's something that we have to look at as a balance. And I am really thankful that all of our folks are going to meet again this week to take another pass at it, to see where we are and go from there. I think considering all options that we have available to us, as challenging as they may be, because frankly, there are no fantastic options out there across the board. Not, not a single one. On the revenue side, on the finance side, on the expense side, everything we do is going to put a negative impression on someone with that. Having said that, there are pathways to get us where we need to go. And this is something that's going to take some time to get us where we need to be ultimately in the long run. I'll go back to what I said tonight. Having a balanced budget that's predicated on a number that is more likely than not to come in is a giant step forward for us with what we've discovered as we've gone back through the last three or four budgets. So that's extremely helpful. That puts us in a position where we're in a more sustainable place. I agree that all the other is an issue. I don't think anybody has a magic wand or an ability to fix that with what we're doing right now. And it's going to be a continuing conversation throughout the remainder of this year, throughout the, throughout next year. I don't see us not having a budget discussion as we continue to move forward, not only looking at where we are, but what we can do, where things appear to be going, and how we're making up ground that we've gotten a little behind on. So I think all of that is part of what we have to look at as we go forward. We've accomplished a lot of what we needed to do tonight. Are there other things that council would like to talk about this evening?
I would just ask that, you know, and I think kind of what Guy was leading to, I don't think, and to your point, it's not possible for us to make up that gap in one year. But could you, I mean, in the meantime, work on us taking a big bite out of that, what that would look like and give it, you know, because I, we cannot afford to be sitting here, staying consistently 6 to 9 million dollars behind. That's unsustainable and we won't be a city. So...
Everybody agrees with that.
Yep.
And the challenge, you know, this, the budget is an annual process that, you know, this is, I've shared with you guys, this is number 35. And from January to February till generally the end of April, all of a sudden, budget becomes all-consuming. So we've got to address the budget, but we can't take our eye off the bigger picture. And to that end, you know, we had a conversation last week with Davenport and Company about what the steps are to not only satisfy this current year's obligation, but if we have to look at next year, their cont... to look at next year, they're continuing to work on that. We're going to continue to work that the month of April and, and to Councilman Wilford's point, what I hope to be able to do as soon as we can get this budget, okay, it's approved, it's done, let's start talking about the rand because that's going to be the focus for the month of May, is how, you know, what, what steps can we take? What can we do? We're continuing to, again, on Wednesday when we meet to talk, if there's any other areas that we can curtail, suspend, whatever, between now and the end of the year, we're going to do that because the key is you've got a four million dollar debt coming due before the end of June and it has to be paid. It's not, it's not a, it's, it's got to be paid.
And are you looking at a reissue? I know you, you haven't, of four million or maybe less, maybe more? Have you, are you still looking at that?
I really want to get a feel for where the March quarterly collections are and the June quarterly collections are. And the problem with June collections is, is we talked about, I mean, the June collections come in right at the end of June. So it, it puts you in a really tight squeeze, but the short answer is I'd love to be able to do less than four to, to be able to, but then the flip side of that is we may talk about more than four to try to eliminate some of that other debt so we can work that down during fiscal '26 as well. So to short, I don't know the answer yet.
Right.
And I appreciate everybody's willingness to have discussions. I know how challenging it is as we talk about these rates, whether it be a tax rate or a fee rate or anything along that line, that we've all heard from people that said, I just simply can't afford that, don't do a thing. That's really hard. Looking at all of these cuts, we've had folks say, you absolutely cannot eliminate this or that and my family still be able to function in the community and that's really hard and we're trying to figure all of that out. If we can keep the same open mindness to all options that are available to us, that helps us look at every possibility that's there that then can kind of balance all of this out a little bit more. I don't think anybody wanted to be in this position and I don't think anybody anticipated being in this position based on the meetings that we've had in this room and the discussions we've had about where we were and where we needed to be. But I think everybody has worked really hard to get us here tonight. If you had told me a couple of weeks ago, we were going to be at a balanced budget tonight without a 30 cent tax increase or 40 cent tax increase, I wasn't sure that that was going to be possible. And that's something. It's not everything. And I don't think anybody is going to claim that we're totally taken care of and out of the woods, but I think that's a big accomplishment. I think one of the hardest parts was going back through those revenue projections that we had counted on as we made our votes on budgets and saying, is that a real number that's attainable or is that number just not something that's, that's feasible for us? That probably has been one of the harder pieces to get to, to say, is eight million dollars here right or is that really a seven million dollar number? Or is it a six million dollar number? Because that affects everything. If we go on it based on the eight million dollars, we're never going to make it and we're never going to get there. Hopefully with the, the new projection, we'll be able to say, yeah, we made it and we surpassed it and we're in a little bit better shape on that. So some big things have happened, some giant steps have happened. And I say this partially because I do recognize folks are like, where's the action? Where's the work? What's happening? Well, there's been a lot of work that has taken place in addition to the current year budget work that has taken place. And I don't discount how hard this has been for all of our department heads and all of our employees, all of our staff, all of our people who have worked on this, for all of our council who have stayed up late at night looking at numbers, comparing to other communities, trying to figure out, is there something we're missing? Is there something else we can do? Is there an action we can take? Everybody has poured their heart and soul and time and energy into this and I think we've moved pretty far along. Now just to reiterate what we're going to do over the next seven days, we have a group that is going to be meeting this week with our department heads, including some of our constitutional officers and some agency heads, to look at everything again and see if we're missing anything, see if there's any other opportunities, see if there's anything else that we can do. Then next Monday, we're going to get back together and that is again, once again, a special meeting. We'll be at six o'clock next Monday in this room and we're going to sit down and we're going to talk through every single thing. We'll have a little more detail on some of the numbers. We'll look at where we are and see if there's anything else that we can move forward on. The only thing that won't change next Monday is as of tonight, we have established the upper threshold on all of the rates. So everything we've talked about this evening, that's done for now and that's going to be advertised. We can go lower than that because two weeks from tonight, we will have a public hearing. We can let folks come in and talk to us about it. We can have further debate, try to figure out where we land from zero increase to the percentage and numbers that we've given tonight. And then we'll have to vote on that because then ultimately tax tickets have to go out after that. The 21st is the day that it looks like we'll actually do our first vote and reading on the budget, correct?
I think the plan is to have that public hearing, we're going to try to do like six o'clock public hearing on the 14th, first reading in your meeting on the 14th, second reading in the 21st, to give the commissioner time to get those texts.
Okay, and that's fine because I was going to ask about that, if we needed a second reading date that was closer.
Have to be seven days apart from your pub, or from your public hearing to adoption of the budget.
So let me reiterate that then. So on the 14th, when we have our regular meeting, it is going to be a budget focused meeting to some extent where we have a public hearing at 6:00 PM. Following that public hearing, we will then conduct whatever other business we need to address. And then we will have a first reading of the rates and the budget. And then we will move forward from there to the next week, the 21st, where we will have our second reading of the rates and the budget. Is everybody on the same page?
Yes. One, one thing that I would also like us to talk about next week too is, is one of the biggest questions that I, that I get asked is this time next year, what's our, what are we trying to obtain? Where would we like to see progress? Can we work on establishing that a little bit? The actions we're doing, where would we like to be when we sit in the, in these chairs next year and look at this? I know we're trying to get this budget passed, but what are these actions going to do to turn this around? What does that look like? If we could answer some of those, I think that that's a huge question that a lot of people have.
Guy, do you have anything else? I know it's at a disadvantage being on the phone, but hopefully you've been able to hear most everything.
Yeah, I'm, I'm good. I've, I've heard everything pretty well. Thanks.
Jesse, anything else?
You know, this is just, I know that I've lost a lot of sleep. This is very, very hard. All of these decisions, as we've said, we understand that there's real consequences in your home. And in the past, when we've been told that we really didn't need to increase taxes, I think all of us felt like your money was better off in your pocket than ours. It's at the point now though, when people have come up to me and they say, what's going to happen? Are we going to be a part of a city? Well, if we become, or if, if we're going to be a part of a county, if we become part of a county, we're going to be paying more. So when someone says to me, I'm not going to be able to live in Radford, well then you're not going to be able to live anywhere in the New River Valley and you can see these numbers. So, you know, leadership is easy, I guess, when things are easy. It's really hard when things are tough to sit in these seats. And I have shared with several of council members and my friends, when we talk about how it impacts our citizens, I, that resonates with me because I, we lived in poverty and lived in a car for quite a while when I was growing up. So I know what it feels like to live on the edge and to have no safety net. And I'm talking to a lot of the people that, that are experiencing that fear. And I'm sorry, it's, I wish that we had more impact on these other indicators. We just, we simply don't. The fact that utilities are, electric went up 26% in two years, that's, that's out of our control, but we have to figure out how to mitigate that so we can pay for those utilities that we're utilizing. So just so everyone knows, I've had an opportunity to sidebar with every single one of these council members and we don't take any of this lightly. If you only knew the hours right now and, and the debating and the back and forth and the fears that, that we have because we understand that we're making a big impact on you. But what I hear that resonates with everyone is we want to be Radford City. So we're going to have to pay to be Radford City. We're going to have to pay less to be Radford City than we're going to have to pay to be a part of a county. So I feel good that we can still be a city, but there's still a cost associated with the things that we enjoy. A lot of communities are not providing as much. Some are providing more, but you see where their taxes are. And I want to change the thought process a little bit. When people have come up to me and they said, well, we like having our leaves picked up for free or we like our trees picked up for free. That is not free. What we're doing is we are, we are spreading the cost among everybody, but it's being paid for. So everything we do, there's a cost. So, you know, I, I would love to hear more input because there will have to be things that we curtail, at least temporarily until we get back on our feet. So knowing that there are no free services, we pay as citizens for every service that we enjoy. Which ones are we willing to give up for a couple of years? And I'd love to hear from more people in those regards because there's no way to say, well, we want all the things at the current level, maybe even more, because I've heard a few great ideas that would even increase taxes more. If we want to balance this and try not to increase any more than what we already are faced with. And you see, even with these increases, it doesn't generate a lot of revenue. So we're still going to have to play, play catch up. So what are the services, none of them are free, that we might be willing to curtail for a while? Because it is, I think everyone has heard when people come in and speak to us, half of the folks that come in are saying, do not cut this. We want this. We have to maintain this. This is important. Well, we all agree that's why we've been able to provide it. But then the other half are saying, don't you dare increase our taxes. There's just no way. These, these numbers, this is very simple math. This is not going to work. So we have to, we have to, we have to introduce change. And this is really when leadership comes in and it's really, really hard. So everyone be patient with us. Don't think that we don't all understand how this is impacting your homes. We do. And we, we actually don't get a pass, so whatever we increase, we're, we pay it right along beside you and none of us like that either. So be patient with us. Please keep communicating with us. We are community people that have, that have stood up to try to guide our city. I am not a genius and I do not have all the answers and I am constantly learning in this role. So I'd love to hear more ideas. Give me your suggestions and thoughts. I'm here for it. We can meet for coffee, but it can't be, don't raise taxes and give us six more free things. That's just, we're, we're at a different place right now. So thank you everyone for your patience and bear with us as we move through this budget.
Thank you, Jesse. Kelly, what do you have for us this evening?
I, I think that you put it quite well. We're not going to be able to tax our way out of this situation. We're not going to be able to cut our way out of this situation. It's going to be, you know, equal, equal parts of, of both. I think we all have come out and said how much we love Radford and how much we want to stay a city and to do that, there's going to have to be some tough decisions. You know, everything costs more. I was speaking with someone earlier today, we're all willing to pay a little bit more for coffee. We're willing to pay a little bit more for fast food, but we want to fuss about paying a little bit more to stay a city. We are asking the minimal that we think that we can and making some very difficult decisions for the amazing staff that we have and the amazing amenities that we have. And it's, we're just going to have to suck it up for a little bit and it's not going to be fun for anybody, but it's just going to be tough decisions that we have to make. And I completely agree. If, if you think that we are making terrible decisions and you decide to leave the city of Radford, you're not going to find a better bargain anywhere in the New River Valley. Those numbers completely show that. And it's, and it's hard. We have some great people working to make sure that we stay a city and I thank you guys very much. We have some great people up here losing sleep and over there and in every department. So it's just going to be tough for a little bit, but we can do it. We have proven that the city of Radford is resilient in many ways in prior years and we will be able to continue to do it again. We just have to work together.
Thank you. And again, thank you to everybody. I think I got everybody with what they wanted to say this evening. Two things that I wanted to leave you with. Number one, I do think that after we get through the budget, having some discussions like for example with our billing office about what your billing options are to get on a budget plan to try to help mitigate some of the challenges associated with utilities, a tutorial in that as a part of a council meeting to talk through that. It doesn't change the rate, it doesn't change the dollars, but it might help you manage it in your personal budget. Talking through anything that we have within the city that can be a resource and looking at all those pieces. We are really looking to try to help everybody here. I don't think anybody has an agenda that they, they want to see taxes go through the roof for some sort of, you know, tax utopia or we want to see the things that we value cut and eliminated because we recognize how important they are to the community. And so we're really working through all of that. They, the other piece that I, I will say for us tonight, we need a chorus of voices helping us share this message. There are folks out there with different messages and we hope that they're watching this meeting, that they're looking at this and they'll take this away. We're discussing these things so that you know exactly where we are and what we know. There's no other information out there that, you know, it's really X amount of dollars or it's really this rate or things along that line. We're trying to give you as much information so you can be informed in this process as well. But that's where we need you when you're having discussions with folks to help folks understand. I heard someone the other day tell me we were going to double the tax rate and I said, well, no, that was not discussed. But that's one of the things that you hear when you're out on the street or, or that we were closing certain areas in the city. And, and some of that's just rumors, some of that's speculation, some of that's just people talking. And this is where the meetings are taking place. You're seeing it in real time, the discussions, the debate, the planning and the decisions. And so we hope that you'll continue to be a part of that. Again, next Monday at 6:00 PM is a very important day as well because we're going to be going back through the budget, working, trying to see what else we can do. We may also talk about additional options that are available to us that we need to really be thinking about as we look at, at everything that we're considering. The following Monday will be the public hearing. I keep stressing that because that's your opportunity to talk about these rates. If you think 82 cents is an impossibility for us, come talk to us about it. It doesn't mean we can choose that or choose something less, but that's your opportunity to share your thoughts with us politely, we will hope. I, I will say everybody's been pretty respectful so far and we need to keep that spirit going. Then we will have the first reading of the budget. That's important because that starts a clock. The second reading of the budget the following Monday will be the conclusion of the budget process for now. We can still revisit these things over the course of the year as we need to and we will and we have and will continue working on this. We're also available to answer any questions. Our city emails are on the website. We encourage you to reach out to us if you do have questions. I've talked to lots and lots of folks electronically, in person, and we are not afraid to have these conversations and discuss it with folks. You're going to hear a lot of what you've heard this evening and a lot of what we've been talking about in recent weeks, but we'd rather have the conversation than to have there be incorrect information out there. And so with that, we will go on and adjourn. Not too awful bad. It's just seven o'clock. It's not nine or 10, which is a positive. We're trying to find a, a little sunshine on a rainy day. Thank you all again. I want to say a special thank you again to our city employees, to our city agency and department heads, to our city staff for all the hard work. I know how challenging this is. You are valued. We could not do this without each and every one of you and we really do appreciate it. To the citizens of Radford, thank you so much because this is a team effort. We're all working on this together. To our council, we thank you and we will stand adjourned until next Monday.
Now it was funny, Bruce and I were talking, I had the exact same discussion of, let's put together a think tank and let's let people be a part of it. It wouldn't have any, it'd be a working group to talk about, you know, what are we not considering, what else is possibility out there?